Water.
I'll do you this, you Sago.
Yeah. I also worked on the Center of Planning Board and the VBA.
Okay, cool.
Wearing many hats.
Alrighty, I think we're a go, yes ma'am?
So as I said, we still owe you the narrative, but I can tell you that, and you can confirm this, the library does not have any big capital needs in the foreseeable future. You know, pretty much I think we're gonna stay where we are as long as we can possibly can. And because we are renting and we're not responsible for the building facilities wise, fine, and mostly our cost series aren't going on operational costs.
So the renovations is...
That has been funded through fundraising with the friends and some grants that were won by the trustees. So that's completely self-funded.
We were a recipient nonprofit for the fabulous science charity, the Frish Shop, right? In February, and we got almost $6 million, which was a...
Nice.
That was a great, a great thing, so yeah, this was completely funded by Don and the money.
Very good. Alright, so go ahead.
So our budget is pretty straightforward. There's a small increase from last year, and I've highlighted everywhere where there are increases. And basically, you know, our budget has gone up not because we're doing anything different, it's just based on operating costs. Our rent went up. You know, the salaries of the employees were raised by 2%. In one case, an employee who now has additional duties, her salary was raised by 50 cents. My salary went up by 2% as standard, we're assuming, we have yet to hear what the federal government is doing, but we're assuming it's only 2%. So then employment taxes went up. The cost of our circulation software did go up, but we feel like this is a necessary expenditure because of what it offers us in terms of, so the library's ability to be part of the state library system. The phone, and you can see, it's a better comparison on the second page than on the first page. The phone went up, and that's just based on the bill from the year before, the same postage, downloadable audio books, which is a hugely popular service that the library offers. That went up, that's not something that we can control, and the same museum passes. Just the institutions raised their rates somewhat. So that is that, if, I'm not really sure, if anybody has specific questions about anything?
So the catalog software went from $795 to $1190.
Right.
That goes to, so that's a...
So we actually, yes, so it's this, it's... This company called Atrium Book Systems. We actually expended this $1190 this year.
Oh, okay.
So it was budgeted for that, and we, that's something that was gonna come from somewhere else in our budget this year, but that's what it was, that was the cost of it. This is, the software is new, so we're in our, going into our second year with it.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so a little bit we underestimated the value of this additional product, that whole pack portion of it, which allows patrons to access their accounts, and we're new online and see the catalog. It also allows other libraries to access our catalog online. And it's really important for the library to be a member of the New Hampshire Library Association and do interlibrary loans, so...
So if you didn't have this, we wouldn't have that ability to borrow books from Darren?
So what happened was, four years ago, the library, the state library had a database of where you would go, you'd log into this database, and you would find who else had interlibrary loans, or like titles that you named for interlibrary loan, and you would request it through that. That database crashed and died, like a horrible death, they still have not replaced it. So that database was also where we, and it's required that you do this, we have to update our catalog in that database. So the software that we had did not allow us to do that. The system that they had to do it manually did not really work. So this new software automates that. So we are now current with our catalog, it does our deletes. The state library has just, I think they're launching it in December, they're gonna do, they're gonna have a new interlibrary loan up, system up and running. But again, it's reliant on the interface with this software. The software that we have before this Library World software is like probably the most basic software that is out there. And I have to say, the cost, so while it seems like a jump, the cost of actually like what the bigger libraries use is like 10 times that. So this is actually, it's a pretty cost-efficient way for us to still maintain our viability with the state library.
When we opened and wanted to catalog digitally rather than have to discover what everybody write down, what they checked out, hopefully best, Library World was the cheapest way that we could do it. And it was about $400 a month, and it was most of the work was... A year, I'm sorry, $400 a year. And it was mostly because there was a lot of manual operations on our end. And what's amazing about this software is, since I've been using it as a patron now, it's really pretty impressive what it can do for you.
Yeah.
You print your receipts of what's checked out, it helps give reports, it would keep track of materials better, there's a lot more functionality for it, in profit library and externally, so...
Yeah. I mean, automatically, I don't know if any of you have experiences, but it automatically emails you when your books are overdue. And so I do the overdue letters every month, and it is a dramatic decrease in the amount. Like it just, our materials are coming back.
Does it, does it help prevent losses?
It does in that people are reminded. I mean, I think that emails are pretty relentless if you have an overdue.
I think you've been walking out with a receipt, which could be...
Yeah.
I mean, we used to, we had a stamp, we stamped.
Yeah.
You know, the kids, that was the big thrill, but you got to stamp your own books with the, we'd turn the date and do the stamps.
Yeah.
But people don't live that way anymore, you know? You're not looking in the back of the book for the stamp. You're looking for the email, right?
Yep. I mean, statistically, if I look at like the letters that I sent out before we had, like, you know, 2017 versus the letters I sent out in 2019, yeah, we're losing a lot less materials because I'm having to contact a lot fewer people. And I don't contact people until materials are 60 to 90 days overdue.
Yeah.
I mean, this is pretty overdue stuff, so I do think that it does cut down on the...
I mean, that would, that would help justify, in my mind, the increased expenses.
Yeah. Well, I think that, and I do, I can't emphasize enough like the importance of us being part of the New Hampshire library system.
Because you have access to so many more.
It's like having like...
Everything. Anything you could think of, someone in the state is gonna have it.
And how does he get here?
So there's a van system.
He's got those, huh?
Yeah. And our van stop is on reverse, so I go over once a week to the cemetery. We used to have a van stop, they cut the budget. We were the first to go. But actually, it's nice, because then I, you know, can touch base with the center of the library. It's actually not that, that big a deal.
Do you have any questions, Jessica?
Yep.
How about you, Miles?
I think that covers it. So the, we don't have a long-term lease there, right? I assume it's a year-year at least?
It is year-to-year, but we do have a plan, like, we talked to him last year, and there is a plan in place for like a five-year, like this is what the increases will be. He gave us a break on the increase this year because of the money that we're putting into renovating. So it was less of an increase than the proposal that we have, but...
They, you know, our bathroom is at the mills, he takes care of all of that. The elevator, which provides accessibility throughout the building. The parking lot, he mostly takes care of. I mean, they're good in the winter, but the parking lot is being, it looks like something from a zombie movie with the plants growing up the back of the building at this point, but, I mean, overall, they've been very generous hosts, and they appreciate the reciprocal relationship and forth of what the library brings to their, you know, the value it brings to their building. So I don't think he's increasing our rent any more than he is anybody else in the building, so...
No, that building has gotten, it went from having a pretty high vacancy rate to a very low vacancy rate.
Yeah, every time I ask him...
It's taller than the car is.
Yeah.
It's full.
Yeah. So he's, I think he's actually quite generous, to be honest.
Do you keep statistics on like visitation and...
Yeah. There's a monthly report, and it compares year-to-year. And I have those numbers, we have those numbers going back at least eight years.
Yeah, I'm just out of curiosity, I'd love to see the value that it's providing, you know, residents.
Sure. Does Emily include that in the minutes every month, or does it...
No, I mean, she doesn't include it in the minutes, it's in the, I put it in the minute book.
Yeah, we have a binder in the library, you know, we'll have to make them one.
But you can see the 2018 in the calendar report.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can see all of them going back really, because it is always in the calendar report.
Yeah.
So I just, I just keyed in on the, so the library assistant and library, assistant librarian?
Yeah.
So those are, represent increase in hours as well as rate?
Yes. So the assistant librarian, her name is Jessica, she has, she's doing more library work for me. She's the one who posts the videos, she does a lot of the cataloging, she's taking over cataloging. She's now doing a lot of the interlibrary loan stuff for me. She works in another library, she has years and years of library experience. She's a really valuable employee, just in terms of like the hours she works versus the work that she gets done, it's pretty amazing. And then my library assistant is somebody who, you know, she does, she can, she does the basic functions of the library, she doesn't necessarily have like the library technical tech experience. I mean, she's learning through the extra years, but she's a little less skilled.
What does it represent in terms of extra hours, like from 10 to 13, or...
For Jessica, she was working nine, let's see, she's working five. So she, she works five, she was working a five-hour shift on Wednesdays, and then three Sundays a month, three, four-hour shifts. So it was nine, five to nine hours, and then she was interested in more hours, and I had more hours open up, because I had another employee leave, and so now she's working an additional four hours a week on Thursdays.
Oh, I see. So library, assistant librarian number two goes to zero.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a little kind of easy, a little bit around there.
And you're all set?
Yep.
Okay.
You're good?
Okay. And I will, I will forward you a narrative as well. And I assume you're looking for like sort of larger expenditures that are on our horizon, or do you have...
Do you have any?
No.
Okay.
Any other changes, though, if you anticipate, like, you know, even if it's not capital, if there are changes that have to happen within the next three to five years or something that are gonna, that could benefit from planning? Like if you think you're going to increase hours, and then over three years, you're gonna try to staff it for 15 more hours a week or something, and you're working toward that goal? Like things like that, so that you can sort of project out what your budget might be doing over the next few years?
Okay. All right. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. All right, have a nice.
Are we here only in private?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no, they're just scheduled to have a...
Oh, no, no.
Oh, here, no.
Welcome to stay.
She runs over that. So this is for you?
She said she, I saw her in the parking lot, and she said she'll be back this Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
I'll try to make sure she's not here.
Okay.
If you are otherwise free, the other two, not Denise who's signing things, but looking over CIP, she provided a narrative, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but the CIP and its narrative are completed.
I kinda looked at it.
This giant one?
Yes.
Yeah, that one.
It's like an eye spy book.
Yes, that's what I was, yeah. Because I printed the spreadsheet, and I didn't change the paperback, so...
This is bigger than legal.
That's ledger.
Ledger, oh, okay.
Ledger, there you go, 11 by 17. Enjoy.
So how does that work with library space, or, so what if he proposed a 50% increase? Like, do they decide where the library is? So we don't have to say that, because the...
Yes, but...
Can we not fund it?
Well, only to the same percentage that you might not fund any other department. The library has special protections under law that other departments don't have. Because kind of like art and music for the school, it seems, seen as sort of like an extra non-essential function sometimes, and so it's, it might be prone to hits that other departments, like public safety seen as essential, wouldn't get. So that's why there is this protection under the law. So that's a really interesting question, and we're just lucky that he's gracious enough to give fair warning that we haven't had that issue. But if he were to all of a sudden raise it past the point that the trustees and/or select board would find it workable...
Sorry, sorry, do you have the beaver?
Yeah. And the lights are flashing. It's all right.
I don't know what to say about that. You know, we'd have to find money elsewhere in the budget until such a time that they could find another location, or else perhaps it would be dire enough that it could be closed. But we would have to really do some research about that, because it would not be the first easy answer that people might think it is.
Right.
We'd have to explore whether or not that could really be an option. I wouldn't offhand immediately think so.
Yeah. So what about the rest of the budget items?
The trustees put the budget together with the library, with the library director, and there's not really anything the select board can do with it. If you disagree with points about it, you can choose to vocally support it or not support it, but you can't amend it the way you could amend a different department's budget. And then, you know, if the people, if the budget committee were to cut the budget by any percentage or by any flat dollar amount, the select board, if that, if that were the final budget that were to be approved, the select board would have to reallocate the budget cuts in such a way that the library was not hit by any greater percentage than any other department.
Yeah, but they would still get a hit.
They would get a hit, but, you know...
If it's 10% plus or more.
If it's $100,000, if it's $100,000, that's gonna, you know, by dollar amount, affect police, for example, more than it would library, because you're gonna go by the percentage.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So the cemetery must be similar to the film?
No, they have different rules.
Okay.
And they may have like similar sorts of protections, but they're not covered under this same law.
Can we get reimbursed for this, I was...
Yes, fully.
Fully?
Fully. Thank you. Did you see that Chuck sent out up-to-date rec. financials?
I did not see it.
Today. It does not include the buses that you just approved, of course. But is otherwise...
Up-to-date?
Up-to-date.
Okay, thank you.
Which includes the final payroll. So payroll expenses will be done.
So it would only be these two or anything small that's out?
That comes out now, yeah.
So it's pretty close to what it is, okay. And the revenue as well?
Yes.
She's not here, I didn't see her.
No, I didn't see her.
Okay. You have to sign this. Oh, this says copy. Do you have the original?
That's okay, I do have the original.
Is this paper, is it new? Can I have that, please? This isn't correct, right?
Oh, oh.
Shouldn't it be this?
Yes.
And probably...
Well, so, so then those things change. Oh, she, did you print this out?
Yeah, but this is yours, this is mine. It's the same thing. It should be this.
Yes, she, she, she gave me a different number to plug in, because she didn't calculate it correctly.
I think it should be 3751.
Is it gonna be elections and regulations?
Yeah, the first, this one here.
A lot of the percentages are wrong, or the proposed change is wrong, I don't know.
Well, this is wrong. It should be this, I believe. It's the difference between 19...
So I have 28764, representing a 15% increase.
Yeah, but it's column E, which says it's 25013.
That is correct for last year.
No, that, it says proposed change, it's not a proposed change. It's last year's budget. If you look at column B, so the change is 3751.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Because I was looking at all the percentages, and they make any sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is correct in, in my spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
The full spreadsheet. So what I printed out for you for Monday is correct. This past Monday, the full spreadsheet that I gave you?
Okay.
It's correct in there.
Okay. But the one that we gave us is here, and the one we had previously, so, all right. And line six is not right either, right?
Well, there's no number in column D, so I'm...
Well, yeah, but there should be.
Yep.
She did not fill out payroll taxes, because she knew that that was an automatic calculation.
Okay. You just kinda...
So I did...
Use everything out?
Yeah, I hear you. So I did put it into the spreadsheet here, and based on her request, the payroll taxes are 2415.
For 2020?
For 2020, the proposal for payroll taxes that would match her request would be $2,450.
$2,415?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a difference of $447.
$447, huh?
Or 22.7%.
22.7%, okay. One more. Are we considering the auditor's recommendation for a cash register?
She is not, in her, in her budget request, she is not.
Okay, and she's aware of the request was, and she's choosing not to?
I don't know that she has read it and is aware. It has been a conversation in the past, but whether or not, I don't believe she's read the, you know, I don't know that she's aware that it came up again this year.
Okay.
It can come out of the executive supply line. It's not, depending on what kind of model is chosen, you can purchase one for approximately a hundred dollars. So...
Okay.
I don't, I don't see it as an enormous expense that we can't otherwise absorb.
So you don't think it has to go in as its own line?
It certainly could, but, um, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would put it under executive and either take it out of supplies or you can take it out of office equipment slash maintenance, which is really earmarked more for the coffee, but you could put it in that line because it's an appropriate line for that kind of thing. Hi there. Come on in. I thought you were people there.
Just me?
Well, they're, they're in increments, so this is your time slot.
We have a wedding in three weeks. Hello, all.
Hello.
Welcome to here.
Thank you.
First meeting, first and a half. Why is it so quiet?
The air conditioning's not on, which makes it quiet.
It's like the Spanish Inquisition. Here we go. We should put music in the background.
I know.
Okay, you can, uh, go ahead and start.
Oh, so what do I present, what I've given you? Okay. So, um, what I prepared for my budget this year is to increase my hours to twenty-three hours a week. And my election stipends to cover the additional hours worked for election. And I want to let you know that the, ballot wagers have gone up because of the four elections and now our supervisors are also required to do water and sewer meetings. So those are additional meetings.
They were never required before?
They were.
They just didn't?
Yeah, so now that they are. The meals, there's an increase, obviously, again, for elections. I anticipate to continue with an increase with vital records. The requests have more than doubled. The real ID has caused a real uptick. If anybody has been widowed, remarried, name change, they won't take the small verse certificates we were all issued back in the day. They have to have the large ones. Insurance companies no longer take a marriage certificate that you got from the church. Everybody has to go through the long-form process. So, big uptick in that. Another thing that I did note that we've had a big uptick is a lot of banks and communities charge for notary service and we don't. And we're finding that a lot of the notaries that we're doing aren't Rawlinsford residents. I think like the word is out. Rawlinsford does it for nothing.
Well, a notary can only charge so much. So what is the bank charging them?
I think it's between five and ten dollars some places are getting.
That's not allowed. I mean, it's much less. Well, unless I've been a notary for years and it was like really small amounts that you could charge. It wasn't worth the paperwork to do it.
Right, and you have to claim it. You have to do the whole process. But, um, no, we're finding a lot, we're doing probably sometimes two to five notaries a week. After nine eleven, everything has changed. There's no more alias names. They're just so tough about you identifying yourself. So all your records have to be, everything has to be notarized. Everything has to be, paperwork has to line up. And we're just, and it, it's falling on us. So, and then, um, so I have reached out to the DMV. Apparently, there is no additional cost for us to add a second system. But as Carolyn pointed out, I've reached out to them and asked if it can be added to Andrea's system without having to add another computer in the office. And then we share our printer. So then the expenses would be minimal for us to have that second terminal.
And they allow that for it to be on Andrea's computer?
They haven't gotten back to me.
Okay.
Okay, so you have your own computer and you have an...
A DMV.
A DMV computer?
Yeah.
Okay. And that was a requirement that you had to have a separate one back then?
Years ago, the state provided you with a printer and a computer. And then little by little, first they took the printers away, now they're not providing it with the computers. They're pushing them on the towns. So, and, you know, one system always worked, but when it's not tax season and I've got three or four people in line, Andrea could be helping them, but we only have one DMV system. So it would be helpful. And I also stated, I would love to see whether we, at some point, and this is kind of like down the future, but pick up a person who's a floater who could be certified through the DMV so that there are three of us. That can, you know, whether it's vacations or somebody's out sick or, God forbid, we both, you know, have to have a surgery or something that's crazy and we're out for six weeks. I mean, somebody else should be trained to be able to...
Do we have that much activity? You mean, three people trained to do it?
Well, we're up, I think, uh, I've exceeded last year's figures already, I think, in motor vehicle. They're, it's succeeding. That's all I can say. It's... When I started here, I probably did eight to twelve transactions a day. There are times I'm doing forty a day. And you have to remember, like, I think when you live here in town, you think, oh, well, we're not really growing. But in one quarter, we sold thirty houses. So ev, all thirty of those houses have a motorcycle, a trailer, multiple cars, dog. It adds to the workload. Because everybody else that's gone out now, we're going to do them all new. Especially when they move from another state. It's more of a transaction to retitle, re-register. It's, it's, it's busy. It's, it's a busy office. And I just think, and again, I said, in the future, I'm thinking there should be a third person that knows how to... And I'm not saying three people in the office. I'm saying a third person who, on the outside chance, that...
See, wouldn't need to have three computers dedicated to...
No, no, no.
Okay, so it would be someone that could come in, like, for instance, Chuck, could come in and utilize
Yes, exactly.
one of your computers and do it if someone is out.
Right.
Okay.
And not even if somebody's out. If, you know, I have four people in line today. It's a customer servicing. It would be nice if somebody could say, hey, you know, let me help you over here. Let me do this renewal. And so you're new, you're, you're all somewhat new. But when I started here, I came from a city and things were much more advanced. And I've always been, I've always done customer service. So I'm about getting things moving, getting people in and out, doing things fast. So the first year, I started the mail-in renewal program. Because prior to that, people didn't know how much they owed. And they didn't have an option other than to come in. So now we have that. And then the second year, I put in the dog registration program. We were handwriting five hundred dog tickets. Like, what type of dog, color, so now we programmed for that. And then the third thing I did was for elections, we were hand-counting. And we got into the ballot machines. So I'm aware of programs that are out there that are going to even make what we do even faster and more efficient, but they're expensive. You know, they're ten, fifteen thousand dollars. And I guess what I wanted to say to the board is just, keep in mind, I have a really small budget compared to like highway and police and our other departments in town. I don't ask for a whole lot. I try to break it up, a new project each year. But the reason that I do it is to improve customer service, to make it, you know, a little bit more streamlined. And, you know, it's a pretty small budget. And all the monies are coming in and they're safe and it's good and it's what's running the town. And it's a, it's a good investment to, you know, keep it coming in as, as well as it is.
Do you think there's an appetite to charge for notary services?
I almost think we should, but I'd have to look into what the...
Up to ten dollars?
Is it up to ten? And what is the pay, is it, it's a real paperwork hassle or do we just keep track of how many notaries we do?
Well, the state of New Hampshire doesn't require you to keep a logbook.
Oh.
Unless that's changed.
I mean, it is an income. I mean, we, we just feel that we're doing more and more of them.
I thought you had to keep a logbook if you charged for it.
Well, you probably do if you charge. I don't charge. So, I mean, I, I used to keep a logbook when I was working with a business and having to do the business ones. But, I mean, for someone who I know or who approves ID, I'm not necessarily, because I don't charge. If you charge, you probably have to.
We never have, but I'm, I'm guessing we will have to keep track of it. I just thought it's kind of a, I mean, it's a...
I'm not even saying charge ten dollars, but...
It's an income.
Something.
I just think that...
I think it's a nice feature for people in town. But we're getting, I'm saying some of, half of what we're doing is from South Burke. People that are comfortable. And I, I just think the word is out that Rawlinsford doesn't charge.
Oh, so you're saying maybe South Burke's charging?
Maybe out of resident, yeah, maybe.
Well, can you do that? Do they allow you to have fees sometimes and fees not all the time? Or, or do you have to say this is a...
It may be different than New Hampshire, as in the requirements for...
Well, right, I just mean, if she's going to charge, can, are we allowed to have a distinction between charging residents and charging non-residents?
Yeah, can I say?
Or do you, do you just charge or not charge and you have to...
It's just, it's something to think about. It's, it's our income because there is an uptick in, um, in that. Another thing I wanted to talk to the board about was with this upcoming election year, with the trouble that we had with the last presidential election. The, it's called HABA. That's the site that we're all on to enter all of our information for elections. And there's a great deal that has to be entered, whether it's absentee ballots or timing. So they have now changed our passwords to a twenty-five letter password that expires in twenty minutes. And when we sign on our twenty-five letters, they text us to our phone a code that we have to enter. So picture me at my desk and I've got a stack of, whether it's absentee ballots or, you know, new residents applying. So I get key, I finally get in and then I get someone at my window and the twenty minutes is up and then I'm back and I get to do it again. So that's why a lot of the times I come in after hours or before hours because I, I can't do it. It's too frustrating and the room for error is...
But why can't Andrea cover the window when you're doing something that is that sensitive?
She can. Oh, she can. But it's not always that she's not doing anything. I mean, she's got a lot going on too. I mean, she... I, I, I think people have the perception that tax time is two times a year and that's it. But there's tax lien, there's deeding, it, there's a whole year that it follows through. Which is the other reason that I brought this calendar is I wanted to show you that these are the calendars we get from the state when we're about to have the massive elections that we're going to have. And every time that you see this lettering in black, that's a requirement of the town. Something that we have to do, some kind of meeting we have to have. And you can see that it's full every single month. And then it drops into July, August, September, which is why so many clerks free up their time because then it's blank. That's when, that's the only time we have where we're not committed to be here. And the new calendar's coming out and I'll share it with you because I just don't think people realize, it's like two separate jobs. It's like your election and what you do at the window. And, um, and it's getting, as the password indicates, it's getting more and more strict. And it should, I mean, and, uh, so anyways, I did do our figures for autos. And we are up, um, I thought I did. I am almost to where we have budgeted me. And this is, that was through July. So the autos are coming in. They're, they're just, it's great. I think it's wonderful for the town, but there's a lot, and it definitely constitutes, I think, having two systems running, you know, when necessary.
So we might be able to not have a second computer, another computer, just run it off?
Right.
Okay, but we're waiting for an answer on that.
Yeah, and I had said to Caroline, maybe we could take my printer, which is limping, as a second one for when Andrea drops in and then I would get the new one. And Caroline suggested, and I asked, whether we could both use that computer, but that gets kind of conflated. If I'm doing a title app and she's doing a registration, then we got to get through the paperwork to see who uses what. I mean, it would be easier if she had the older one, kind of went through with that, and I did get a new one. But we'll take it one step at a time. I don't know, I've reached out to the state and they haven't gotten back to me on how we can do it. But I'm just trying to be efficient. You know, I had a kid that waited maybe fifteen minutes today in line. And then when he got up, you know, I brought up his registration, his registration privileges had been revoked. So we waited for nothing.
I waited for about eight minutes and then I left.
Yeah, yeah, see?
I thought he was behind you.
Yeah, it's, um, it's hit or miss. You know, it used to be, I used to be, know it like clockwork, beginning of the month, end of the month, you know, Thursday nights. Mid-Thursday, a week ago, I was slammed. This past Thursday, average. There, there's no, I can't, you can't put a pulse on it. But the money's coming in and you're going to see the DMV pushing more to the towns. Yeah, I know. I mean, we're doing a lot now, but I think we're going to start doing titles, which was something that we would mail out and they would reprocess the titles. I think they're going to, they're going to supply us with the paper and we're going to be doing the titles. It's just, and, and in the state with the elections, it's full-time job. So, that's my budget. And I'm glad that you have a chance, it's not too busy, that you could listen to my woes.
I wonder if it was busier last Thursday, like if there's a, you know, bi-weekly pay periods or something. Like next, maybe next Thursday it'll be busy again.
No, because, well, we generally, the last, the last Thursday night and the first are busiest. Because people either, if they come in in the first, they would, they would do last month. Or they come in towards the end.
Because they're due, yeah.
And then I have months, like September people, I send them out, I've already sent September out. Half of them have already done them. I swear, it's like the, what is the Zodiac signs? You have people that are like, ahead, and that's how it falls. It's just, there's no rhyme or reason to it.
Have you modified, have you thought about modification of your schedule of having two nights?
I have. Caroline and I talked about it today and I'm open to it. I mean, I would, I don't mind. I'd love having the days off. If I did Tuesday, Thursday, I, I'd like to think it would be busier, but I think people get paid Thursday, Friday, and that's where people come so many, some on Thursday nights.
You could do a trial run and see what Tuesday, Thursday did.
We could.
You could put it, you know, put it out there that we're going to try to, you know, have a second night and see how it works. And if it, if it doesn't work, then that doesn't make sense.
Right, I do, I could flip-flop my hours.
No, I understand that. And I don't like that either. I don't get it. I don't...
Could you do a poll?
You could. But I will say, another thing that I've noticed, I, I would say some Thursday nights, more than fifty percent are retired people, which I just don't get.
Which surprises me. Because I would think that you would have more of the working force that's there because they can't come during the day.
Exactly. And all these people can come.
Yeah, they're...
Exactly. And all these people can come the other days of the week when they come on a Thursday night. So it's customer, you know, it's, I've said for years, and if you do DMV, you don't, there's no, and we've done everything so that you can do it either online or by phone or, or by mail. Um, the only thing you can't do is when you do a brand-new vehicle, you have to come in. And for most people, that's not that often. And, um, I would like to go back to, um, getting the Dropbox so that when-
It's been ordered.
Oh, good. So that when somebody shows up and they're like, oh shit, I just missed them by twenty minutes, they can just put it in and we process it and send it out. A lot of people's mentality, I'm not gonna go to the post office and get a fifty cent stamp to mail it across the street, which makes sense. I mean, I would stick it out on my box, but I just can't get, I mean, it's been five years I've been doing the mail-in renewals. It's better. There are more people using it, but the majority of them carry it in. So I, you know, I'd love to go online. Portsmouth went online and then they took it out because it was a three dollar charge per transaction. So if you have a car, motorcycle, in a trailer, it's nine dollars more. They would process it and people would say, well, wait a minute, I don't, I don't pay nine dollars more. And with the DMV, when you process it, it's done. There's no backing out.
They'll pay charges too.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
They charge it, you register a vehicle online.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna wait in line, it's worth the three bucks of mine.
It is, but do you realize it's per transaction? That's what catches people.
And the system doesn't let you back out once you get in, right?
Right. Once you've processed it, you're done.
Yeah.
But it, it's city of Dover because they do have the work vehicles.
Yeah.
It's very clear that this is the fees before you get down to the no return and getting out, you know?
Which I understand on the mail-in renewal, but when they come to the window and you've processed it, that's when they have the question.
I don't know, why, why do they come in as-
Well-
They shouldn't be coming in if they do-
Pay by card, you mean? Yes, yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
So if they're at home and they're tapping in and it gives them their total and at that point it's their choice to do it or not. If they come in with a debit card and I process it, then it's done. And then they put their card in and they're like, well, wait, why is it three dollars more? And I say, you know, if you don't pay by check or cash, it's three dollars more. Oh, I don't wanna do it then.
I had, I took credit card, debit cards. You take debit cards here?
No, you don't. I'm saying-
Oh, if you, if you did do it.
If I did do it.
Oh, okay.
And the picture gets bigger too. Like, wouldn't it be great if we could do it in mail-ins, right? But then if, if you could just do it mail-ins, great. But then people come to your window and they're like, well, I can use a debit card on mail-in, why can't I use it here? And if I can use a debit card for you, why can't I do them for my taxes? Which again, three percent of a three thousand dollar tax bill, people aren't gonna do. I, I just, I wish, I wish it was this easy, peasy system, but-
What about a system where, I, I don't know, the legality of it, but if, uh, like on the town website, if there was a form that you built that said exactly what you needed to, like say someone comes to the window. I'm sure there's certain things they need to provide, numbers, um, whatever, identification of their car. Could they fill it out online and then you could input it into the state system later or upload it to the state system later? Be free, except for your time. So like, uh, like you would have an ax, like a database behind, send it with, uh, you would, so they could go to the website, they could say, okay, I wanna register a car and it would be a form that you built or someone built and they would, they would ask them, what's your name, what's your car number, what's this? And then upload, it would go to pass to you or someone in the office. And then you could either upload it to the, the state if the state has some sort of ability to, to receive that by XML or CSV or something.
They do.
They do.
And that's the program I was talking about. There is one through Avatar and I think it was ten or better. And there's one through, it's called Easy Grid, which I have the dog program. So it's, it's one of those programs where you build on it and people would be able to do their dogs online and they could do their cars online. But again, then we're taking credit cards online, but not at the window.
Because they still have to pay for the registration.
And I, I, like I said, I can barely hit people who spend the fifty cents to mail it in. I, I, I don't see a lot of them spending the three. One transaction, yeah. But most people have, I mean, I think every house in town has three cars, a trailer, a motorcycle and a boat. I swear. No, and two of the cars, I'm gonna open a dog park in my neighborhood. So anyways. I, um, I'm trying to each year make it a little bit more user-friendly.
I would pay ten dollars to do something online.
So would I.
I would pay fifty dollars not to go to the post office and buy a stamp.
I don't know. You are not the average. Now eventually, as our generation changes in town, I can see that, but right now, I, wait in line?
I spent ten dollars to send a certified letter online the other day. You know you can do that?
No.
Fantastic. The future is here.
Well, see, that's, yeah, I get it. I get it. And I'm right in between the two. So like I get what the younger kids are doing, it's so much easier. My kids can't believe I don't have Vemo or whatever it is. And then, um, but then I have, like my in-laws that, you know, there's no way to put the stamp on it. You know, so that's where we're at. We can't please everybody.
All right, I just have a, um, a question on your, um, request to increase your hours to twenty-three a week. Is it every single week that you have three extra hours?
Like in the summertime, um, so if I don't come in at eight-thirty, so if I come in at nine o'clock, okay, then my system's not up, my cash register's not out, I'm not really ready for business. I can't get to my emails and my phone messages. Now, every day's different. Today, I don't think I got to my desk till eleven, twelve o'clock. So I try to come in, answer my emails, answer my phone messages, set up my station, so, you know, it takes a half an hour. Yeah, maybe fifteen, maybe twenty minutes. Thursday night last week, I went over to the bank in Somersworth. You know, by the time I got home, it's seven-twenty-five. So I always did this and I've been doing it for years, but I'm, I'm just at the point where I really can't mask it. I should get paid for the hours that I work. Now, this is our slowest period right now. You will see when I present my time sheets going forward that twenty-three is a, the minimum, probably the least.
What is your maximum approximately?
Twenty-five is probably more accurate through like auditing, um, town reports, uh, town meetings. You get into elections, it's probably thirty, thirty-five. I mean, I wish I had an easy calculation. The only thing I can do is keep track of it for a year for you. Because I've done it and until Suzanne suggested that I keep track of it and I did and I was actually quite surprised myself, how many hours. And I get it, it's salary and I try to offset it.
Why don't we talk about that? What are your feelings versus salary versus hourly?
I would, I think you lose a lot of control if you go hourly.
Do we even have the option to do that?
She used to be hourly.
She used to be hourly. I don't know why they made her salary.
Who, Beverly?
No, you used to be hourly.
What?
You changed to salary about three years ago after the, um, like the election stipend committee, um, met and evaluated. And then you, um, at some point after that, the board gave you some kind of market increase because you did not receive the across-the-board increases that other employees got for two or three years in a row. And so they did that for you retroactively and it coincided approximately with the time of that subcommittee and they made you salary at the same time. I think that was in fifteen, fifteen or sixteen.
That's interesting. And we'll have to look back at, um, payroll because I never remember my check ever fluctuating.
It doesn't mean it fluctuated.
Oh, cause you could've just worked the amount of hours that you would've worked on the salary.
Oh, or hourly.
Right, like four hours a day, five days a week and that was it. You did do a, you did do a, you did do a time sheet for a num, for quite a while until, um, the select board after one audit period, Suzanne in particular took issue with elected officials signing the time sheet of another elected official. And they just didn't see the point in that and the auditor agreed and so then you were no longer required to do time sheets.
I don't remember that.
Okay, but now that we have a business administrator, a town administrator, we would be able to have that conflict gone.
What conflict was that? What?
A town official, elected town official signing, uh, town official, elected signature.
Well, so if you're suggesting that I sign her time sheet, I certainly can, but it, it kinda doesn't, it's really just an acknowledgement of her self-reported hours because as an elected official, um, I mean, it depends. If you're, if, if she's salary, then it doesn't-
That's not what I'm, I'm just looking at if, she's looking for twenty-three hours a week versus, but if you're not working twenty-three hours a week every week,
Right.
then we're gonna be paying a salary that we're not getting the benefit from, the town.
True.
And if you, so making her hourly, she will get what she's, what she works.
So, okay, it doesn't, so you certainly could have me sign time sheets. It doesn't mean that the board can't sign time sheets. The auditor just, um, agreed with the idea elected officials over elected officials. But, but if that's the new arrangement and she's agreeing to that, we can check with him, but I don't think that's necessarily a conflict. It wasn't done away with because the auditor felt it was a conflict or agreed that it was a conflict, but more, more than that, just sort of validated the board's concern about it being a conflict.
I'm fine with that. I think those, I'm fine with that. I just-
Well, I just think that, you know, there are, there are times when you work more hours and there are times when you don't.
Right.
And so in order to get paid what you believe that you are working, then in fairness, I think hourly would be
Right.
the right path to go.
Right.
But just think about it.
Yeah, yeah, I will. And I, um, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to take Fridays next year because the election in September is gonna involve, um, time in July, August and September. And what happens is, you know, I have taken, the first couple of years, Fridays were dead as doornails. And then I've taken them off, but then I find that I'm so much busier on Thursday night and Monday, it's not worth it. Like I'm, you know, I, they're all coming on the four days instead of the five. And with the election, I just don't know all, whether it's gonna pan out, but so. And I do try to do everything based on what's best for residents, you know?
So when you were taking the Fridays off, that was compensating you for the time that you were working over your twenty, is what you had explained to me?
Yes.
So if you got paid for your twenty-something plus hours, then, then you wouldn't get paid for it if you took a Friday.
I wouldn't have a clue as much.
Right, right.
Right, it would just be my average, like everybody gets, you know, three, four weeks, whatever it is at this point in my tenure. However many you get.
An elected official gets weeks?
No, I'm saying, I know. See, I'm so stuck in the middle. I, I'm so used to everywhere I've ever worked, I had a time sheet. And this is how much vacation time I had, this is what you, you know, and you knew what you had. But I am, you know, extremely honest about the way that I track it. And even my quiet time right now, I'm still four and a half hours on days, as, you know, submitting my time sheets that you can see. Just so that I'm prepared when the window opens. And then when you close, I could do my reports, do my deposits and, um, the hours are there. I just, I just, I'm hoping that you realize how busy our little community is getting.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Questions? All right, thanks so much, Kate.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the features.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's from your tree.
Oh, yes.
Ours are prim and tiny.
Ours are dropping off. They're, I don't know, I'm just doing a lot of stuff. I keep bringing-
Hand them.
You get easier said than done when you peel about two hundred of them.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Chief? Good evening.
Good evening.
There you go.
They have the, they have copies of what I submitted?
I do.
Y'all do? I brought them in case. We can go from there. Any questions before I get going? Do you want me to just delve into it?
Why don't you just dive right in?
Dive right in. Well, number one there on my narrative, let's slide by that one. We'll come back to visit that one. What are you chuckling for? Well, I don't expect that one. This is something we need to discuss as a, start the ball rolling. Second one, number two down there is the protective clothing equipment line. Asking to increase that. It's been, um, seven, six, seven thousand dollars forever, never enough. And just the costs of replacing equipment or outfitting a firefighter now with his regular PPE protective equipment is running anywhere from thirty-five to four thousand dollars just for gear. That's coat, pants, boots, gloves, hood and helmet. So, um, we do have a schedule. Um, we track it in our, um, system at the station and we try to replace three sets a year because, um, they have shelf life. Gear is only good for ten years. So we're trying to kind of regulate that and keep it at that even keel. But, um, one issue we've run into so far this year is in fact, we've had an awful lot of guys going to school. And a lot of the schools have been dictated under the Fire Academy. And there's no loopholes for the Fire Academy. When I go to Larry Straffin, we can stretch it a little bit, but not with the Fire Academy. So when they go to the Fire Academy, they better have every piece of equipment that's all within the service date so that they can not have any issues. So that's part of the reason, but some of it's just, uh, again, the amount we're trying to do is just to increase costs of what they're charging. Globe themselves had like a fourteen percent increase last year, just in what their cost is for supplying gear. That's our supplier. That's the biggest nationwide supplier there is. Uh, they control the market, so it's not like I can go find something someplace else.
Is that going out in Pittsfield?
Yep, that's correct. That's them.
Do they date their, the gear? Do they put a date on it? They do.
Has a tag right in and sewn right into the seam. But what we do when we, uh, replace it and it comes, like, we have a representative that comes out, measures everybody so they get the exact right fit that they need to have. So it doesn't, you know, crawl up their ankles or up their wrists like that so that they get rid of those burners bats. And when they do that, all that measurements goes in, but when it's issued to our guy, it has his name inside the code. So if I go to something for Knowles, it comes in with Knowles on the inside or as long as he's there. And then when the next guy comes, we kinda scratch that off, but somebody else is in there. The name isn't so much the kicker, it's the actual manufacturing date, month and year. So if we buy something right now, it's, uh, what, eight of nineteen? Come eight of twenty-nine, bye-bye. You really can't be using it.
Well, what about, cause sometimes you have some turnover and it goes into storage. So does it count on the storage time or is it usage years?
It's, it's the usage years. What happens when we get to something that's beyond ten years? We don't, obviously we don't get rid of it, it goes upstairs. It's therefore, if we have other members that come in and are going to be trained and they're not going to school quite yet, we give them that gear. It's still serviceable. There's nothing wrong with this stuff.
Some of it, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's still good gear. You know, it's fine. This stuff will last thirty years. But the trouble is NFBA has that timestamp that's been approved, that's a check the code by. But we have that extra gear upstairs. If somebody's gear gets dirty or damaged and, you know, we had all the fires last week. Some guys are washing the gear, they don't have a backup set. We pull that stuff down so they're able to respond again. While their gear's getting cleaned and my, so.
That's in-house, but if they're at the academy, you can't take that. Okay, I got it.
What happens if there's an injury on the gear past ten years?
That's what you don't want. That's why you better make sure that these folks are staying within that ten-year timeframe. I'll be honest, my gear's like twenty-two years old. streets, hydrants, buildings and their protection systems, all that kind of stuff, so we can just have it on an iPad, punch up where we're going, going to the mill, okay, punch it up, it'll tell us where hydrants are, it'll tell us where the stand pipes are, it'll tell us where the fire department connections are, all that stuff at two in the morning, you may be a little foggy to try to remember. So we're looking down the road to try to get that, and, and the program that we have now, our emergency reporting software, offers that ability to be able to get one of these iPads and download our stuff right into that. So that's what we're looking for, we're not gonna do it right away because we're still, you know, correlating an awful lot of our equipment, but we're looking to get to that, to that point.
Now, are, does he work with Tom for the computer?
They certainly could, but they have, like, they have lots of techie people in the, in-house, but you should take that point though, that Tom LaBelle has contracts and vendors with people that can sometimes offer less expensive.
All right, that's a good idea, we can follow that when we get to that point, yeah.
You know, a better computer for less money.
Yeah, but that's, you know, the same thing with Sean Glidden, that's what he does for a living.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
Are you thinking like one iPad or like a couple refurbished ones?
Uh, it could be either, but probably just one. We'll either keep it, you know, those two pieces are going out, I recall, so it's gonna be there and be available, and it'll be in one of those one-hundred percent of the time. The thing with Sean, that's his job, he designs his systems for a major company, so he's, he's kind of like the go-to guy, but I understand Tom LaBelle, and we used to have a whole, he's been in the station before, okay, he'll still there and get some stuff for us, so.
It's particularly handy for purchases because there can be government discounts sometimes and a line of.
Yeah, when we get to that point, it looks like that's where we wanna go, and I'll, I'll follow either you and/or Tom, and we'll see. Sean will get his stuff, he's like, we can do this, and then we can do that.
And price of that is pretty noise.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So how does, I know that Dover's doing these iPads, what is their opinion on how that goes?
They love it.
It does.
The same thing our PD uses now. Whenever you show up at any incident, or we're on an incident with a PD, they all have that, and they'll have, I don't know, I think it's probably eighty, ninety percent of the residents in this town will show up at a certain address, they can punch it in, get, get building owner, get a callback number, get all this information that we need, rather than go breaking into their house, maybe we can make a quick call and find out where they are and get some information from them, or if their house has a protection system, all that stuff that they have is on it now, and these guys are using it, and we kind of piggyback off of that stuff.
I think, can they get that information from the town as well, for like contact details and stuff?
That's a question for the police chief.
Oh, I, do we have it as in town?
No.
Okay, so it's just chief, okay.
However they load it and keep up with it, they have a very good system.
Yeah.
Because, I'll say, he's, ninety percent of the calls we go to, like the sergeant, who brings that right out, sorry, yeah, this is this person that's here, this person's this and this and this, and you get all that information. So it's right there, so. And the next question, well, if they have it, why do you need it? Well, because we have additional equipment that he's not gonna, additional information that he's not gonna, he don't care what the fire hydrant is.
Right.
He doesn't care whether the fire department connection is.
Yeah.
So the two of them can kind of work in conjunction with each other.
You should be able to.
Both have all the information.
Pull, pull the data that you would need and then add your data, and then you don't need the PD's data or his warrants and all those kind of things, you just need to have the common data.
Yeah, yep.
Which we should be able to work with that.
Yep, and this, kind of, again, you asked about Dover, and I know they're using them more for the last three or four years, but all the larger departments around here are doing that, whether it be PD or be fire, because it's just, it's there, it's loaded, it's ready to go, and it just saves you having to do all that research work, because somebody's done it before, got it into the unit, and that's kind of where, we kind of need to head that way too.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Four is just the office supply stuff. I know I come down here and I get some stuff, I used to get a lot from kids, you'd give me paper and this and that, but it just costs more to get ink for printers and every other thing, so it's just a costly little business, we're starting around a little bit low and short on that, so I wanted to just bump that up a hair.
I, I have wrote a note here that says, do you charge any fees for outside agencies? You do, and that goes to the town, no?
Yep, that's another thing we'll bring up for another night for discussion, I've kind of, again, had a discussion with that, Caroline, we actually do create some revenue for the community.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If people call and ask us for a fire report, we charge twenty-five bucks for a fire, no, excuse me, for an incident report, an incident run sheet, it's twenty-five dollars. Now, on a fire report, we've been charged at fifty dollars, just because there's a lot more paperwork involved with the actual fire incident. And we had another, we've been sitting down at the station and talking about setting up a fee schedule for some of the other permits that people are coming in for, and we, we could go as far as, you know, whether it wants to be a burning permit, installation of like oil burners or chimney inspections, I mean, all that stuff, most fire departments have some sort of fee schedule for that. So we were kind of looking, well, we do a fair amount of those, why should not we, of course, and that stuff. I think last month, I gave Caroline a couple different checks that have come to us from, we're getting more and more and more requests from insurance companies and lawyers, just about every call, half the calls we go to are gonna generate some kind of paperwork for an outside agency. It is all the time. So, again, that's where this is coming from, we're just generating more stuff.
Yeah, exactly. You don't, you don't charge your state and federal reports?
No.
You don't charge, it's just your, your local ones that.
Yep, outside agencies are calling us for different requests, and, you know, we're becoming more and more schooled with that, with our personnel, as far as their report writing skills and their entry skills, as far as putting things into the computer, because we're trying to elaborate a lot more stuff, so that not only to get the information that these agencies are requesting, but also to get all our information, because we get requests that are a year or eighteen months old, and we're trying to, geez, what call was that one? So you go back in and we refresh our memories, but also to make sure that they get the information they want. So we're expanding our knowledge base and what we're able to regurgitate in these reports, so everybody's happy with it. Instead of these little one-line, I, you know, we went here and did this, and this, we're all done, no. Expand on that, everything that you did, everybody that was here, so that's where this is coming from.
Where does this revenue show? Is it all locked up?
It's brand new. It's in other miscellaneous revenue for now.
Okay.
If it, if it continues to pick up, I would create its own line, and I might create its own line anyway because it would be interesting to track.
Yeah, but it also helps justify the fact that he needs more supplies because he has to do these reports, which he is getting revenue, and so it helps offset his so-called budget in, in some fashion, you know, but at least he's bringing.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about it, that's all. But if he's, if he's bringing in money and he needs a case of paper because he's making all these reports, then it kind of helps justify it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know what you and you relate, we're getting close to offsetting that number. I know, right? Where are you going with that? Okay? Any other questions so far? No? Okay, we'll go back to number one. Because I know it's gonna generate most of the conversation, and I wanna kind of expand on it a little bit. The same request, and as I've written in there, kind of a little bit of a background on why the request is there. I think everybody understands that I've kind of been in here numerous times and kind of said where we need to go, and I'll continue to say that this town gets the biggest bang for its buck of anything in the area because of what we're able to do. And I think some of it is because we've developed a pattern from the past, from Harry on down, the fact that the community always had some people that were firefighters someplace out, shift work someplace out, so people were always around. Those days dwindled down to practically nothing. This morning, we had a fire call, trash truck on fire right out here on Main Street, and had two members show up. Daytime call, eight to four. That's where a lot of this is coming from. That's our biggest problem, is trying to get enough money for that eight to four slot. Kevin was always around, that's gone. I was left where I was working, I was working down in Kittery, started this way, because that's what I do on most every call, but everybody else is working, so that two-person response is, is very limited in what we can do, safety-wise. So building on that is, I've done some little bit of calculations and some thinking and some discussion with some of the other chiefs, and I know it's coming, and I've discussed it, that it's getting very, very close, and I don't know how many people get the Fosters and Ritz Sundays, like Greenland just got on permanent firefighters for the first time, they hired two full-time guys. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we don't need full-time guys because our call volume isn't that way, but you can't just relate it to call volume, because if we had people that were here more often, that could encompass public education, building inspections, boilers, burners, truck maintenance, station maintenance, all that stuff could come underneath if people were here. But what I'm thinking, and I'm not advocating it now, but it's like right on the, around the corner, is I'd like to see, we'll make a proposal someplace here in the very near future, that we do some sort of per diem type of coverage for our community. NFBA standard says that you should be, when alarm is received, in three to five minutes, you should be on your fire truck, and I headed out the door. If we make that half the time, we're lucky. And I think some of that's only because it's me and Sean, or me and Danny Toof, or somebody that lived like right next to the firehouse. Harry was the exact same way. But what I was thinking down the road, is this, a lot of smaller communities now that don't want full-time guys have do, have do what they call per diem, so they'll have an open shift because they do have full-time positions, and they'll hire guys whether it's eight, ten, twelve, or twenty-four hours. Our biggest issue is that eight to four slot during the daytime, where, every time a page comes in, you know, my, my blood pressure immediately goes up here, because I don't know who's coming. I have no guarantee, I don't even have anybody. Okay? And that's just something that, liability-wise, may come back to become an issue with us down the road, we can't respond to something within that time limit. We all know as far as the officers goes and some of our senior people, and we are very, very lucky that we have this kind of relationship with South Borough, because this morning their chief, Joe Russo, comes over, and we can probably call them, but we cannot rely on them to be the initial responders, we cannot do that. That'll come back to really become an issue, because they'd be augmenting another community on their tax dollars, and that just won't go very far. So what I'm talking about, where I'm thinking of going is, eventually have my thoughts where I have two guys that would make themselves available in that eight to four time slot, Monday to Friday, and pay them a stipend of fifty bucks a day. Hundred bucks a day, two guys, sat down and figured it out, it's like thirty-six thousand dollars, but you guaranteed you would have two guys, fire station, five minutes or so till we able to get something on the road, till we start what we need to do to mitigate whatever the problem's gonna be. That's where I'm leading to, that's my first step, that's my first thought on how to help solve our staffing issues. It's coming. See, because I, well, I'm local, it's not a big deal, because I'm coming out wherever I'm at, I don't know what the call is, and I'm coming anyway, so I leave my paying job to come to my partial job, so. But we just don't have folks anymore. Sean is around the lot, but, but he travels, you know, and he travels, he's in Atlanta, he's in Vegas, he's in Chicago, so it's not like he's, you know, I can be there now, no, I'm always coming, whenever I'm around. Danny Toof does shift work, so there's two days a week anyway that he's out. David's been very good lately only because his two days are on our schedule, so we've been feeding off these guys that do shift work that are able to fill in these gaps, but that's getting fewer and fewer reliable. So my thought is down the road. And this, this is kind of just discussion here right now, I started to work some numbers and some thinking so that the community as a whole, and you guys right here, can start thinking about it. That is probably the best way to start to alleviate the problem. I don't have to keep with full-time guys, because we're not there. Will we be there? Maybe, but that costs us, I don't even want to see those numbers. So that's my thought. And I put the five in there again, as I said here, to try to maintain and get us up a little bit over that minimum wage threshold, and right now, I think the state is still seven twenty-five, even though, I saw something the other day, and I read it, and I look at it, that the state's pushing to get it up to ten, and that was on the governor's desk a month or so ago, where it stands right now, I'm not sure, but I do know right there, I put down what other fire departments start their intro people at, at the fourteen level, and that's on the very low end of the scale, and I'm not looking for that either, but I'm looking for something where these guys will have a reason to want to be around. Some of these guys, you know, need a little bit that they get on their quarterly payroll status, but it's getting harder and harder to keep people, harder and harder and harder, and to keep them active is our issue. We're a training ground, that's nothing more than we are. We grab them, we train them, and off they go. And eventually, that has to kind of reverse to maybe you'll have, other than the town folk that live in town, manage to be in a fire department, we can always rely on that, but even that starts to change.
But they do come back.
It's funny how they circle around, isn't it?
Yeah, they're gone, and when they retire, they come back, which is really good, because they remembered where they got trained.
They remembered where they come from.
Right.
Say that an awful lot.
Yeah, yeah.
I got a new member in the station tonight, we had, we had five people that were sitting through the RMT class, they were over at UNH, all five of them passed, so now they have to go through their national registry to become certified NTS. One of the other students in the class got kind of close to some of the Rollins remembers that was there, and John Cunningham, I don't know if you know John Cunningham, he's one till we able to get something on the road. Till we start what we need to do to mitigate whatever the problem's gonna be. That's where I'm leading to. That's my first step, that's my first thought on how to help solve our staffing issues. It's coming. See, because I, well, I'm local, it's not a big deal because I'm coming out wherever I'm at. I know what the call is and I'm coming anyway. So I leave my paying job to come to my partial job, so. But we just don't have folks anymore. Sean is around the lot, but, but he travels, you know, and he travels. He's in Atlanta, he's in Vegas, he's in Chicago. So it's not like he's, you know, I can be there now, no. I'm always coming. One of them around, Danny Toof does shift work. So there's two days a week anyway that he's out. David's been very good lately only because his two days are in our schedule. So we've been feeding off these guys that do shift work that are able to fill in these gaps. But that's getting fewer and fewer reliable. So my thought is down the road. And this is kinda just discussion here right now, and started to work some numbers and some thinking so that the community as a whole and you guys right here can start thinking about it. That is probably the best way to start to alleviate the problem. I don't have to keep with full-time guys because we're not there. Will we be there? Maybe. But that costs us, I don't even wanna see those numbers. So that's my thought. And I put the five in there again, as I said here, to try to maintain and get us up a little bit over that minimum wage threshold. And right now, I think the state is still seven twenty-five, even though I saw something the other day and I read it and I look at it, that the state's pushing to give it up to ten. And that was on the governor's desk a month or so ago, where it stands right now, I'm not sure. But I do know right there, I put down what other fire departments start their intro people at, at the fourteen level, and that's on the very low end of the scale. And I'm not looking for that either, but I'm looking for something where these guys will have a reason to wanna be around. Some of these guys, you know, need a little bit that they get on their quarterly payroll status, but it's getting harder and harder to keep people. Harder and harder and harder. And to keep them active is our issue. We're a training ground, that's nothing more than we are. We grab them, we train them, and off they go. And eventually, that has to kinda reverse to maybe you'll have, other than the town folk that live in town, manage to be on a fire department, we can always rely on that, but even that starts to change.
But they do come back.
It's funny how they circle around, isn't it?
Yeah. They've gone, when they retire, they come back, which is really good. Because they remembered where they got trained.
They remembered where they come from.
Right.
Say that an awful lot.
Yeah, yeah.
I got a new member in the station tonight. We had, we had five people that were sitting through the EMT class over at UNH. All five of them passed. So now they have to go through their national registry to become certified EMTs. One of the other students in the class got kinda close to some of the Rollins members that were there, John Cunningham, I don't know if you know John Cunningham. He's one of the instructors. Sitting in our station right now, filled out an application because he'd like to maybe transition into the fire service. So this is another one of the hundreds that have come through that I've been associated with. We'll give you a start, we'll get you going, it's the same thing, I wanna come in and tell you about our training, we'll get you certified. We keep them for a year or two, they're doing well. Comes another one down the road. So, that's where all this is coming from tonight. Am I making sense? It's not that none of us wanna, none of us wanna be looking at it. It's a big jump, but it's something that has to come in the forefront and the community has to start making some decisions on, on how they wanna staff their fire department. Because the days of what we've been doing are dwindling as people are getting older and experience level isn't there, life changes happen and they move on. So, as of this point, I put the five in there just to kinda keep us filled it up. We can go with that, we can have a discussion, we can do more, we could, I think it's something that's warranted, or we can go with what I've requested for now.
I just wanna clarify for the board that his five thousand dollar request on salaries is in addition to the five thousand dollars that you've allocated to his budget this year that was not part of the official town budget. So it appears in the official budget worksheet as a ten thousand dollar increase.
Oh, because it's not showing there?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I had a question for you today.
Yep.
Because I thought that you had, I had been informed that that was something that you guys had put back in, but because of the way it all lays out, it doesn't show that. I'm operating under the increase that you guys added to it.
Yep. This might be something that everybody knows, but I don't. New people coming in and were paying for training, does that get paid back? Or is it possibly come and get training and then go off and get a job somewhere else?
That's usually what happens. What we do is we have a sheet, we have a contract that we have to sign. And we want them to stay there for a minimum of one year to help get some of that back. But we are not paying the, the whole price of the training. Think of our training class, I have a gentleman right now, it's in the academy, taking the recruit school through the fire academy. It's a seven thousand dollar tuition fee. Because he's affiliated with the fire department, us, it's seventeen hundred dollars. Out of that seventeen hundred dollars, we'll pay half. He's responsible for the other half. And I'm very upfront with that stuff, they know what they have to do as far as their training. Because the certification stuff that you're required to do if you're a firefighter is advanced. And you have to have it or we can't use you, basically.
My father went to the academy when I was a kid, so.
Father was a firefighter?
Yep, in Brownston, he was a volunteer firefighter.
Okay. So you understand some of what, some of what.
A lot of time.
Some of what we're going on.
Yeah.
And these guys give immense amount, you know. It doesn't reflect them what these guys all do to, to make everything work in, in our little situation here. So, but that's, again, that's another thing, so we can try to get some folks here. Because we're battling every other fire department in the area if you're trying to get personnel. Go by Elliot's fire station any day, you look at their door on one of their bays, what does it say? Firefighters needed now. Big letters, they added the now, we could do. But they always said the firefighter needed part up there. So we're constantly, constantly trying to draw from other people. You know, not to beat my own drum, but because of some of the connections I have, an awful lot of people that are looking to get into this business, they send them our way for a lot of different reasons. But the fire department has a very good reputation about being able to get these people, get them trained, get them skilled, teach them the right way. And they go, I have so many chiefs, you got anybody over there, some of these full-time chiefs? Because they wanna pluck people out of our fire department. And I've said to you time and time again, I have a list in my desk drawer, that has sixty-eight names from guys that are, come in, trained, that work with us and are now permanent someplace else. Sixty-eight guys.
Permanent or, or in full-time?
Career, career, permanent people that have gone through our fire department. So, I use that, I use, I use that, oh Dover, Dover's got immense amount. But I use that as a tool for recruitment and retention because of those reasons. And some of the people that I've worked with over the years, the chiefs, understand that, so we kinda, we're training ground, like I said earlier. And we know that, and it's just the way it is, try to hold on to them as long as I can. And as you said, some of them circled the way back.
Are there other programs? So the academy, if you go and you're affiliated, you get a discount.
Yep.
Are there other programs that we could leverage for retention? Like, you know, okay, yeah, eventually they're gonna get trained up to a certain point and piece out. But if there's programs that's gonna cost us six hundred dollars over a year and it keeps them in our system for a year, yeah, they're gonna be much more attractive to another town, but it might keep them here, working for another. Is there anything like that, or?
Well, I kinda know where you're going. The fact is, it's more, it's more, it becomes a, there's no system or programs like that. It becomes more of a loyalty thing and understanding where your roots are.
Oh, so there's no like level two or level three, or is that more like EMT side?
Oh, no, there's firefighter level one, used to be firefighter level one, career two and three. That's what I went through thirty years ago. Nowadays, it's level one, level two. One gentleman we have now is in Rye, he's gonna come out as a level one. The new guy we'll probably put on here in the next week, who will probably start in the fall, Larry Straff's classes that he runs in North Park, he gets out as a level two. There's more bang for the buck there. Because he's getting both certifications. And in the old days, when you had a level three certification, that included things that were above and beyond the normal firefighting skill would be like rappelling, below-grade rescue, building collapse, trench rescue.
Water rescue.
Water rescue, swift water rescue.
So these are all under certain grades, these are not like pick and choose certificate?
No. No. They used to be on the old level three, you had to go take all those to get level three. So what happens now is you get your level one, which is all your basic, basic stuff. You get the level two, which now includes things like auto extrication and rope work and, and some of the advanced skills. Level three went away, and now you go to a class and you get a specific certification in swift water rescue, ice water rescue, below-grade rescue, trench rescue. Instead of accomplishing it one class, you get one specific certificate because you spent two or three weeks at one specific class.
Oh, so they're very short.
They're short, they are short, but they're very, very specific in time, they don't want. You know, the biggest one is now, is bombs and active shooting. Those are everywhere. If I wanna send one of our members to any one of those, if they wanna go, federal government picks up the tab and off they go. That's the big one, sad, but that's, that's where the money is right now, it's all the mess. So we see that stuff and we have a couple of guys that have shown interest in, you know, they wanna go do it, it's not gonna cost us anything. But we recoup the certification, so should they come back? You know, I talked to the police duty center about that. We hope that stuff, you can get your guys to go, that's great, because you just doesn't have manpower either if you had a situation like that. So it's just constantly recycling and regurgitating itself, so. We try to keep up as best we can.
And you can't make them sign any contracts on that because we don't have to pay anything for it.
That's the hard part. It's all like, we're giving you something, so you know, man up and sign this piece of paper and give us a little something back. Is really where a lot of it goes.
Sununu beat up the minimum wage, by the way.
What's that?
Sununu beat up the minimum wage.
Okay, thank you. It was ten bucks, I think, sitting on his tab.
Yeah, ten bucks now, twelve bucks in a couple of years.
There it was. All right, that's fine. So we'll still circle to seven twenty-five, but I know that's, that's costly given.
Yeah, it'll, it'll happen, I'm actually, it will.
Well, see, the thing with me is, again, and I said this, we've had the same conversation, it's extremely difficult to see my members working next to somebody else, you know, making six to seven dollars when these guys are making twenty, twenty-five, thirty-five dollars doing the exact same work, the exact same certification. This guy's in Dover, this guy's in Rollins, they're both the same, except in some of those other things. They don't, just because you work for Rollins for the call department, well, they have fire department, your standard is no different to the guy that works in Manchester, Boston, or St. Louis. It's exactly the same. That's what's so, that's what is so difficult for us to try to maintain once we've got. Really, really hard. We hang in there, though. We're doing okay. That much I can tell you, we're doing okay. Just because we have a very well dedicated bunch of guys that show up at the firehouse. So. That's my pitch.
Any other questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
So, I guess she'll probably tell you when I, I don't want to come to you guys anymore now it's budget.
Well, you'll have to go to the budget committee.
Right, yeah, whenever.
Yeah, this is, we'll make our approval, recommendation takes to the budget committee and then you'll, I would assume that they're gonna have our department as, as well as they have every other year.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, they're next.
They're scheduled, and, and if you wanna. Yeah, everybody.
You already gave me the date that I'm gonna be here.
Well, not, not I, but.
No, no, I understand that, that's fine. I know it's coming, I know the process has moved up because this should always be in November kinda thing, you know.
What's gonna be up a little?
We've slipped forward just because of the changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you hold on a second, I can tell you when it is. The sixth of November, Wednesday, the sixth of November.
November sixth, oh, probably six o'clock, right?
Their meetings are at six-thirty, I don't know what order they'll address departments. You're on with police and cemetery.
Can you talk to John?
Well, I just think it's a little bit easier, I mean, not knowing what, what, but trying to lump the police and the fire in the same night, that's, that's like, well, police is obviously the biggest budget you gotta deal with. You know, then probably what George is after that, we're scraping the bottom. But sometimes it's hard to, wanting to report him for one. I don't like to follow him, but it's almost, in my, in my view, is almost a better way to disseminate who and when they give their presentations.
Yeah, I don't know who, he, he made that schedule, right, John did?
It was approved by the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's kinda what it's always been, you know.
Thank you.
Danny, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hello Suzanne, I didn't know you had mine. That's right, you're a member of that, all right.
Yeah, we're tough. We're tough.
I saw Monica just called.
Yep, Monica.
I'm standing. Hello, who are you?
Sharon, you, you are new.
I am new.
I'm Suzanne.
Nice to meet you.
Jessica.
Yeah.
Jessica Welch.
Welch, yes.
Hello.
She's a, maybe a select board member.
Yes.
And now is doing CIP.
Yes. Let me, let me a minute here, let me bring up stuff.
They do have a print copy, so they.
And of the summary?
Including their summary.
Excellent, excellent.
Yes, we covered on big pieces of paper.
Nice, even the summary, huh?
Even the summary.
Even the summary.
Yes, rather than change the print job. Okay. Well, nice to be here, thank you for having the time to help her think about CIP. We met over the course of the summer with police-fire highway department transfer station and talked a bit about town hall, but as you know, the town hall facilities director to help us with that. So, what we have, what I'd like to do is sort of go through the highlights and then open it up for questions if you, if you have any. Our requests over the next three years are, you know, in the two-hundred thousand dollar ballpark, a little bit less in one case, a little bit more. And one of the, what we try to do is to keep the annual appropriation requests as flat as possible. But nonetheless, if you look at the executive summary, there's a real, you know, it's slowly increasing across the ten years until you get to twenty-twenty-nine and it's, woo, a little high. So we'll talk about that in a bit, but that, that is the case with this CIP. And, but otherwise, other than that last year, we're, we're trying to keep the requests as flat as possible as a recommendation. The other difference that you'll see is that the item that had been called town administration slash police facility has been changed to town hall slash RPD system upgrades.
And can you explain why?
Yes, so, we know that the board and the town have not made a decision about facility for either town administration or the RPD, whether it stays, whether it's a new building. So that line was, was never enough money, but it was, we had put it in it, we put that line in there to cover a new facility. So, so if, if, so you have to, you know, we're, we're planning within ambiguity. Is there gonna be a new facility, is there not gonna be a new facility? If there's a new facility, that amount doesn't cover it in any way, shape or form. And so what we did was we just said, okay, we'll call it system upgrades. And if, to this building. And should the board and the town agree to, to bond to a new building, then that line is no longer used for system upgrades for this building and can be, you know, the, the board could take it, stick it in the operating budget and help defray the principal interest payments and bond.
Okay, but you're assuming that we are only still gonna have one building versus maybe two buildings?
What, we're taking through ambiguity, right? There's no, there's no decision one way or the other. And so what we've done is say, okay, we've got, we, you know, we've got this building, this is what we currently have, and so let's think about changing that line to say improvements and upgrades to this particular building. So if, if, it's just, it's a name change, right? So the名词have a change.
But it's also a meaning change. It's, it's changing the whole meaning of what it was originally intended for, in my opinion. Because it's now upgrades versus new facility. And we don't know what it is, and you're absolutely right, but until we knew what it's going to be, my opinion is that it shouldn't have changed the intent of what it was originally.
This is the, this is the CIP committee's recommendation, you or the board, and you can do whatever you would like from this point on. So I'm, what I'm trying to do is tell you the context and the rationale for why we made the changes we made. So the board is gonna do what the board does, and that's fine. So, but given that, that is how we thought it through. And there is in the plan, two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars dedicated to specific town hall projects. And these were all there before, these are not new, although we may make slight adjustments to the project costs. The generator replacement, security upgrade, replacement of the facility, air conditioner compressors and associated ductwork and new roof. But above and beyond those specific projects, the plan earmarks the four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars across ten years for capital improvements, upgrades at the town hall RPD. So, which, which we just said, so it's just how, it's just semantics, it's how you look at it. It's the same amount of money, pretty much. So, in all, there's, if you take the specific upgrades that I mentioned as well as that line, you've got seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars that can be earmarked for this building. Another item of discussion was the two fire engine replacements in the CIP. And that discussion's made more complex by the introduction of the replacements in our D tanker, which was sprung on us, almost like an aside, you know, this would fit to ask me, is there something else, is there something else? And so, the tanker, I guess, they were suggesting twenty-twenty-nine, it's near than fifty thousand dollars. So, which adds a big chunk to the CIP. And so, again, we had a, a lot of discussion about how best to manage all of that. And while members of the committee feel strongly that the CIP should be used to fund all the capital projects, we also feel strongly that the increase in the average annual outlay could simply be overwhelming with those equipment replacements. And so, what, our strategy, and again, this is our, this is just a recommendation, right? Board is gonna do what the board thinks is best to do. But so that we could complete our part of this recommendation, our strategy represented that we would bond the next fire engine to the tune of about six-hundred thousand dollars, the one that's going to be in twenty-twenty-six. In order to allow the CIP to fund the tanker completely and the second fire engine. And the expectation or the hope is that then we would be on track and we could fund all the RFD vehicle replacements by, by the CIP. Two other highlights, which I'd like to have put in the executive summary, but which bear mentioning, have to do with a long discussion we had with the highway department, with our road agent, with regard to equipment configuration. And, you know, the articulating loader is, I think it was called something else, but he, he said we really should call it an articulating loader. He thinks that the combination of an articulating loader and a mini excavator provides the town with a lot more flexibility and value and would like to see those two eventually replace the Bobcat and the Backhoe. So if you look at the plan, the Bobcat, which was moved to the transfer station, is zeroed out. It's there, but it's zeroed out. If you look at the Backhoe, that's been zeroed out. And the dollars are in the articulating loader and the mini excavator. Does everybody see that? So that's the current thought that George was recommending when he met with us, the committee agreed, and that's what you see. We had some discussion about the articulating loader and its cost, but that's where we, where the committee ended up as far as the recommendation. We had some discussion about the articulating loader and its cost, but that's where we, where the committee ended up as far as the recommendation. The other thing that is interesting to note is under the transfer station, we've removed the Quonset huts. I don't, I don't know if I actually just deleted them or whether they're still there with zero dollars.
Still there with zero.
Zero.
So because our road agent said he was going to manage a functionality that he was looking for for the Quonset huts via the operating budget, by constructing some, some things, structures, at, with, at less dollars, fewer dollars. So those are some of the highlights. There, there remain some uncertainties. One is, of course, the uncertainty about the new building, new town hall, as I discussed. There's also the issue about the town boilers, so I left it in there. You can see it's highlighted with zero dollars. When we met, there was some discussion about whether it would come out of the authorization that had already been approved in March, or maybe a delay of next year, or maybe we need to be reauthorized. So, so it's there, zeroed out with the other, with the expectation that it would be installed and paid for with that authorization of 2019. But we kept it there just in case there's, there's a change in plans. And then there's the LED lighting is on there too with zero dollars. We don't know, we didn't know when that might happen, how much it might be, what the funding would be. So it's kind of there as a placeholder. And then we put together some things that might mitigate that leap in 2029, that could, could not happen. But I mean, clearly, you know, the, the CIP requests that, that come in, in the years before, 2020 through 2028, if there are ways to increase those requests, then that could be used to diminish that 2029. So, you know, if the board finds itself with either increased revenue or lesser operating budget or whatever, or feels that the town would be willing to abide by a request amount different from what is currently in the CIP, then that, that, that increase could help defray, you know, the 2029 request. Something else that I brought up to the board before by an email and just bringing up again, and that's the Old Mill Lane Bridge replacement. And it's currently on the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's, you know, bridge replacement list, scheduled for 2027, with a total project cost of $965,000. So what you see on the CIP is just the town's portion of that, it's the 20 and the 80/20 split. But, you know, the board should keep in mind that during that project year, you'll need, you'll need to get short-term financing because it's a cost-reversible situation. So you've got to spend the money and then you file your reports, you get the money, the money back. But, but there, there's another possible strategy, and that is, you know, just continuing to replace the temporary bridge with other temporary bridges. The traffic on that is minimal because there are only two properties beyond it. So, you know, you can check with the property owners, DOT, engineers, and see if that is a viable strategy and what that lifespan of the temporary bridge might be, you know. But temporary bridge, it costs $75,000 with a lifespan of 20 years, results in an annual allocation of $3750, a little less. And, you know, part of the cost of that original temporary bridge, when I sat on the board, was the guardrails that are in front of it. So they're not, they're not going to go away. They don't need to be replaced, so I don't know what the final cost was. But anyway, just something to consider, and to the extent that you can, you can reduce that $189,000 that's currently in the CIP, then that will help reduce the overall pressure on the CIP and, and help mitigate that 2029 leap.
You would have to get DOT's blessing on that, I would assume, if that's what we would recommend.
Well, I, it, it was on the bridge red list before, so I think it, and we are on the, on the, on the DOT's list to replace it. So yeah, I think it would be a good idea to needs to, to check in with them and, and say, look, you know, you might want to check in with the engineer before, or I don't know. But, you know, if you went to them and say, look, our engineer thinks, you know, it's perfectly safe to have this kind of a bridge with this kind of a traffic for this amount of time.
Yeah.
We just want to run it by you, so yes.
There's no, there's no possibility of being more than two houses over that bridge, right? I mean, is there? Without another outlet?
Never say never, but.
Without another outlet to get out?
It's, it dead ends into a classics road, so if the classics road were to open up, then.
Isn't that classics road that was talked about, what was it?
No.
Fresh Creek.
It's Fresh Creek Road.
Fresh Creek, yeah.
It's the other side.
It's the other, yeah.
Okay.
And I think on the right-hand side of it, I don't know who owns that land, but I don't think there's available.
I don't believe there is, or, you know.
But, yeah.
I mean, it just seems like if it's safe and it's only for two houses and it's safe, and it saves us and the state a ton of money.
It's a lot of money, I mean bucks for two houses.
For two houses, I mean, if it's never going to be any more than that, you know, I mean, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's something to consider, yeah, and you've got a little bit of time to, to mull that over, but. Also, you know, should the board decide not to recommend a new building for town hall and RPD, that, that $744,000 that's currently in the plan, it may be overstated, you know, who knows? As improvement and upgrades are more clearly identified, the process may cost a release of funding that can be added to the line to the CIP. So, you know, again, this, as you get clarity on, on where that, where our facilities are going. And then, you know, yeah, in, in case there's a miracle and, and certain things that we think that would don't cost a lot of money don't cost as much money, that can be used. And also, I mean, our plan ends in 2029, and we don't really know what 2030, 2031, et cetera, bring to mind, but that fire engine, that second fire engine is scheduled for 2035, I think. So, so depending on what sort of comes up for those years, then, then maybe you can actually make the, that, whatever's left. I think there, it's assuming an allocation of maybe $60,000 for those ensuing years. I mean, maybe you can make it $70,000 or $75,000 and take it off to 2029, so who knows?
The fire trucks added to them was based just on possibility of replacing them.
I'm sorry, I'm just beginning to question.
Adding, adding the fire trucks to those was just saying, okay, what is it that you have in your building that is going to eventually have to be replaced? So these dates are, could be extended based on usage and based on rest and all of those things that goes with the fire truck that causes it to have to be replaced, but it doesn't necessarily mean or those. It's a target date, right? So if those can move out for sure.
Absolutely, extending it is, is gravy, right? Cause that, that absolutely releases some of your money. So the, the other thing that I, I will just offer is a suggestion. You know, we're trying, we're trying to capture all of the vehicles and actually all of the large recurring expenses. And, you know, we don't have everything yet, you know, because, because obviously the tanker came up just this year. So, and we put the command vehicle in the plan without a year, without an amount, just, just to, don't worry. Just so that we won't forget it.
Yeah.
So it might be interesting to see how other municipalities deal with what is a 10-year plan, but where do they put the stuff that's not in that 10 years yet? So that they don't forget it, so that, you know, maybe they want to even start saving for it now because it's huge. I don't know, but it would be an interesting thing maybe to explore, should anybody have the time. And then, you know, bonding implications, I included the current repayment that we're under, just so that you can get an idea that if, if, you know, if you wanted to think about the recommendation that we bond the next fire engine, it will be, right now, it's scheduled to be bonded in 2026, so the payment would likely not begin until 2027. So you can see, you know, that's the last year of like where all three bonds are active. And then the following year, the transfer station falls off, four years later, the, the fire engine bond falls off. So, yeah, I would just be hopeful to see that. And I, I, that's all I have for the presentation for you.
Just to highlight also, so a kind of a surprise thing was the extrication equipment for the fire station that had not previously been on the plan, but they were, the piece of equipment they have is the second oldest in the state. The first oldest is a backup to a backup in Nashua, so this is not optional, am I?
Those are, God, that was donated by Jancho years and years and years ago when Harry was.
Go back to Jancho, see if they got anybody.
But it ha, it highlights, you know, that we're still trying to get completeness on this.
Yes, yep, yeah, but it could be a backup. But now they've come up with new improved, all this big, non-heavy, their battery.
Their modulars or something.
So many different things that you can do, but for sure. And it, you, you can, neither one, you want to have it on your truck.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely.
Now, hold on one second. Paving parking lot can come, oh, you took it off.
Yes.
Cause you know that's happening now.
Oh, very good. It just, I think we, I think maybe our town administrator suggested that it could get put on the paving schedule, so.
Well, cause we didn't know.
Prior to.
Prior, it could have been less, two weeks ago or something, we found out that we had some extra money from the paving account, so there's some things that we can get done this year. So that will, well, he's prepped it already, but it hasn't happened yet, but we won't have to worry about that.
Yeah, so let me go over, because I didn't do that explicitly, some of the outlays for 2020. So one is the police leasing. And we have extended the 10-year plan to include only leasing. So, so the years that you don't see as much money is because, you know, there's, there's a, there's no lease starting or, or something like that. I actually had it clear in my head, but all of this is leasing. There's no purchase. And so, you know, Chief Dushar said at some point, they may come back and request that, you know, we start purchasing again, but right now, he suggested that we carry it out with a little leasing. So that, that's what you see. So some, I guess some years, there's still just two leases active and other years, all three. The, let's see, and that's it, that's it for police, just the vehicle leasing. Under fire department, as Miles just said, there, the extrication equipment is new, but it seems that it's a safety issue, so we put it for this year. There's money in the, you know, we figured, we figured with the, where the fund balance was, so it can come entirely from the CIP reserve fund. The forestry vehicle, most of it can come from the, again, while this wasn't new, I don't know that it was originally scheduled for 2020, do you remember, Miles? It was on it, but.
I don't.
I don't think it was.
Yeah.
I think they just, they're having some major problems with it.
Exactly, so again.
Kind of at the top of the line.
Right, so, so we've just got a $9,200 outlay and the rest is coming from the CIP reserve fund. And that's the outlays for, you know, what would be warrant article recommendations of the board, goes along with this for the fire department. Under highway, it's the articulating loader, which is expensive, $50,000, which is in the CIP reserve fund. That's the only, I, I guess that's it for outlays.
Digital fingerprinting.
I think that's 20.
Thought we.
Oh, I thought it's 2021, yeah, I think that should be 2021.
Cause you've got green on 2021.
I do, I see that, that's not correct. What's not correct is the purchase target year, that should be 2021. Sorry about that. So, any questions? The septic upgrade under fire department, there was a lot of discussion about that, it's unclear, they haven't been having problems lately. So we didn't want to eliminate it altogether, so it's still there with $40,000. And the other item under fire department that we should point out is pave stabilize the front ramp. We've got $20,000 outlay and in our discussions, we thought that was probably too low, but.
Are we looking to do that in 26? That's got to be done sooner than that.
It's gonna have to be 2020, either 2020 or 2021.
Yeah.
If we're gonna comply with stormwater and have washing stations that have a drain that go into a water separator and all that. It would probably coincide with that, or it would probably make sense to coincide with that.
Yeah.
But we can put that up to 2021 because, you know, the, the year is different, the stormwater year, we thought was September through August, but it's actually July through June. So nonetheless, we can put it off, but it would have to be in the beginning half of 2021 if we put it off.
So talking about septic, when is the reality that eventually they'll move sewer up to the fire station?
It's the will of the commissioners. And it's about the cost and, and whether or not, you know, and who would pay the cost.
And that was part of the discussion that the CIP had, so again, you know, there was a great big unknown.
And it may, and it would probably require a booster pump.
Yeah, yeah. But would it also require an enlargement of the sewer facility?
No.
Cause we've been always told that they're at their max.
The, the water, bronze for the water sewer?
Mm-hmm.
It's not it, it's max, no.
But that's what we were always told.
They sold the capacity in prior years, they would sell capacity to other towns' facilities.
And a lot of it.
So they don't have.
Yeah. And why did highway get put on the septic, you know?
There's no sewer on that side, isn't there?
The sewer stops at C and J.
Oh.
I mean, it's, they went under the railroad track to give it to C and J, right?
I believe so.
So that was built after C and J, right?
Well, it was built in 2008, and I believe C and J was already out there, I can't tell you that. But C, all I can tell you is that C and J owns their pump station, their little booster pump, so I don't know if that was a factor.
Michael Point talks about what might be required to get the highway department on it. I mean, there's some little brokers, there's, there is an issue that might make it a little more difficult. But Mike, Mike can, Mike can talk to you about that, I never had any conversations.
I was surprised when I found out that they have, when we know that the pipes have gone under the, it was under the railroad.
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay. All right, you guys. Good, good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good work.
Just one more. Is he here? He was here.
Mark's here, sir.
Is he still here?
Yeah, he's coming in.
Oh, there he is.
Don't miss him.
Have a good night, Suzanne.
Suzanne? Oh, right, right, right.
Come on up.
That's Mark Fisher, this is Jessica.
Jessica, you're welcome.
My salary budget, I think, has gone up all $50 from last year. And what it is, is we've gone up on the, the mowing and the trimming. The price of that has gone up. It used to be 13, 1340 is what we're paying this year. And he had came in with a higher price than last year when we hired him. We asked him to, to do it for this price, for 1340. The board talked to him and we said, you know, he does a good job for us and stuff and it works out. You know, we, we try to get the extra money for, for next year, and that's why of the increase.
You believe he's been doing a good job? I think he's been doing an excellent job, yes, absolutely.
He, you know, I don't have to call anybody and tell them, you know, go mow and this, and he's doing it all on his own and he's doing a real good job.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
And, and, you know, this year's been a lot of rain and so it's been a lot of. And, and you know, this year's been a lot of rain and so it's been a lot of, but I think he's done a good job.
Good, good.
Other than that, that's about the only increase, I believe. So we're, we still continue to put, purchase some gravel for the, for the roads, try to keep them up every year. Tree trimming, we try to do a little bit of tree trimming every year. Talk to, Caroline talked to me today about going through George and getting together with George and doing, going with the same people that he goes with.
Yep.
And I'm going to do that in the future, so.
Should we, I don't know, we haven't done the town side yet, but should we be considering upping the water rate, the water consumption and all of these budgets?
Yes, I actually, I, I did put that, I did up the water rate in elsewhere.
I, I upped this one a little bit because it's usually 166, I believe.
A quarter?
It's currently 93.
A total?
A total.
Okay, but I, I suspect they're going to go up on their rates.
I think it's 90, it's $93 for just water per quarter now, and I think you only pay for two quarters, is that right? I think that, so that would be under $86.
166, I believe, I, I didn't.
Oh, so what do they do, shut it off? So you don't have to pay when you, do you have to, do you have to pay when they re-put it back on? Or is it because it's a department and within 10, they don't have?
$186, it's two quarters, there's no turning off or turning on.
Okay.
Yeah, 166, I think.
Oh, I thought it was kind of though for a quarter, so, okay, if it's only for two, then.
So it's currently $93, so.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm a little sponsored, that's what I can pay, 166 for total. So I don't know why they're charging us that much.
Well, they went up on all their rates in January.
Oh, this year, I mean, okay.
Yeah, this year.
You have probably haven't got your bill yet.
I'll get you a printout, I'll get you a printout so you can see where things are.
Yeah, I am since this year, so.
That would make sense because it is about that, it was that last year.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So any questions or anything, anybody?
Now, is the cemetery cleanup done by the same people that do your mowing?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we used to do the, the doe cemetery cleanup and I brought him out there this year, well, actually a couple of weeks ago, I brought him out there and asked him, I'm going to have him start doing that, so he does everything.
Oh, okay.
Next year.
Okay.
But that comes, that comes out of the doe.
That did, yeah.
True. We all do that once a year, so we all break it all off, that's it.
Any questions? No, I was just, I have a, a list of how much it will be used for water, I was trying to find it quickly, but I don't have access.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Sorry you had to wait so long for such a show. Sorry you had to wait so long.
Sure, he loves hanging out.
He loves hanging out.
Thank you.
So tomorrow we have, please.
We have it in. Transfer Highway, please. It's actually Transfer Highway and then please.
Transfer Highway and then please, and this is everyone. Well, Noah's, we need rec, I'm going to be getting in contact with him tonight, got to get that in there. And then, and then what's your, what's your schedule for town?
Now, um, it, it, you know, I don't know, except that I'm, I'm working on it and, you know, and it'll be, I would say by the latest, but you know, I've got a lot of it filled out and, so there's more than what you have on Monday, so as I, as I fill things in, you know, the spreadsheet is, is populating itself, but it's, it's slow going, so, but I know you need it, I know, you know, I'm, I'm very well aware of your timeframe, so.
And we also have to talk as a, as a board about what we're going to recommend for compensation across the board, I would assume.
And, and we can start going over some of town tomorrow night if you want to talk about what I have plugged in.
I don't want to rush you and, you know, just if you believe it, we can do it at our meeting, our regular meeting too with the town. I just need to get rec.
Yeah.
To get.
Well, that's a bigger conversation because it, you know, the creation.
You mean rec?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I, we just need, I need to get to the deadline, I need to get the deadline like for the other week, because we're supposed to get it last week and I didn't get it, so.
Is rec like soccer program or something?
It's a summer rec program, that's a program that they run for July and August, and they actively, they charge tuition and they actively try to get grants and stuff to fund the program. The intention is for the program to be 100% on them. If they do run over though, we are responsible to pay the difference. So we know we're going to have some numbers pretty soon to see where we stand from the program that just ended.
So there's a, they, there's a, like a K through six program and then there's a team camp.
Is it to replace school hours, so the parents don't have to pay for childcare?
It's a full day.
It's a full day, it's not the whole summer.
It's eight weeks, you can pay more for pre-care and post-care.
Yeah, yeah.
And there are field trips.
And it's held at RGS, but this year we had a little conflict, but I think they only went to the Legion once, as far as I know, I think it was one day.
I don't know.
Unless they didn't post it, you know, and when for other days, but they, I sent, I got, it was one, I think it was a Wednesday when it was predicted thunderstorms, and so they said that we're going to go there directly, so that was good. The Legion stepped up, the grade school had a lot of improvements done to this school, no stairs, you know, they had to redo the gym, they had a polyurethane on the gym floor and stuff, once you do that, you can't walk on it for weeks, so that's, they had to either be outdoors or in the hallway, so we were able to get that, the Legion stepped up and said, is he leaving?
He's, yeah, he's having a hard time, I'll explain that.
Oh, okay. So they were able to get the Legion at no charge, which was really nice, so. Anyway, so I will work on him, try to get that as soon as possible, so, all right?
Good.
Any other questions?
Nope.
So tomorrow here at 4:00 to 6:00 as well. All right, good.
R and B.